Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the September Hoboken Board of Education meeting. With the start of the new school year, which kicked off last week, we'd like to welcome everyone back and we look forward to a great year ahead. With that being said, Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 8, 2022. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on TV, on video, and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on C A T V Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the deform of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nonetheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices on the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatori.
Here.
Ms. Delara.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Ms. Mr. Clutful.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Simons.
Yes.
Ms. DeKurian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Well, we will resume the recognition portion of our meeting next month, so in the meantime, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. The 2022-2023 school year is off and running. Last Wednesday night, we held a district-wide ice cream social with over 1,000 parents, students, and staff in attendance. The evening was sponsored by the Museum of Ice Cream in New York City. It was a lot of fun and it was a great way to start off the new year. On Sunday, we hosted a barbecue for all new K through 12 families in the district. It was really nice to see such support by our buddy families and our PTOs. They attended and quickly connected with our new families and their children. Everything from light rail access to uniforms and homework were discussed, and I think new friends were made. Cell phone and email information was exchanged between parties, and all in all, it was a really special afternoon. I would like to thank our administrative team, our HEA leadership and staff for not only attending the events but contributing so positively. So, thank you for attending, board members also, those of you who attended those events. I appreciate your presence and it was great to have you at them. There's a number of events and activities that are coming up throughout this school year that I'd like to announce now, but you'll definitely hear more about them as the year goes on. So, there is a Boys and Girls Soccer Clinic on September 17 at JFK Stadium. It's open to children from ages six to 13, and it's open to kids throughout the city in all schools. We're also offering a punt, pass, and kick competition, which was a lot of fun last year at JFK Stadium. That's going to be held on October 15 for children ages eight to 13, also open to all children across the city. On Friday, October 21, we will be having the Louis M. Tagliari Jr. Stadium Dedication. And on Sunday, October 23, we'll be hosting a family-full pumpkin patch and dessert festival. And then, moving on through some of the other events, we will be hosting a family math convention for all families to learn more about mathematics standards, our curriculum, and that's going to be on Sunday, December 4. We'll be hosting a family ELA convention in February on the 5th for the same purpose, to learn more about our curriculum and also about the standards. We'll be hosting a family science convention on March 19. And on Sunday, April 2, we'll be hosting a district-wide family fun run for all families in the district, and that'll be a citywide event. And between April 3 and May 31, we'll be hosting a really fun district-wide scavenger hunt for all students and families in the district as well. And lastly, on June 4, we'll be hosting a Family Geography and Cultures Around the World Convention, which will mirror the math, science, and ELA conventions. So, throughout the year, as we get closer to each of those events, we'll keep you posted and updated. This evening, though, it's with great pleasure that I report out our harassment, intimidation, and bullying grades. So, out of a total score of 78 possible points for the 2021-2022 school year, Joseph F. Brandt School scored 74 points, Thomas G. Connors School scored 75 points, Wallace Elementary School scored 75 points, Hoboken Middle School scored 74 points, and Hoboken High School scored 76 points. That's a self-assessment that the New Jersey Department of Education requires us to do each year regarding everything from how many harassment, intimidation, and bullying learning experiences do you have, how many trainings do you host, a whole range of topics associated with harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And I'm proud to say that anywhere from 74 to 78 total points is considered a very positive, positive score. In addition to the required reporting of self-assessment HIB grades for 2021-22, I'm also pleased to comply with NJSA 18A 7C-7 and 18A:7E-3 to report to the Board of Education the following graduation statistics from the 2021-2022 school year. The number of students in the four-year cohort for the class of 2022 was 93. The total number of students that graduated was 91. Total number of students that were denied graduation from 12th grade or chose to take the allowable COVID bridge year was two. The number of students that graduated under the competency test process in the state of New Jersey was 85. The number of students that graduated under a substitute portfolio appeals process was zero. The number of students receiving state-endorsed high school diplomas as a result of meeting alternative requirements for graduation as specified in their special education IEPs was six. And the number of students denied graduation from the 12th grade class solely because of failure to pass the high school and, of course, PARC assessments, the state graduation proficiency test, substitute competency tests, or portfolio appeals process based on the provisions of this chapter were zero. This evening, I'd like to highlight three programs in the district. First, I'd like to highlight our new academic support center. The program rests on four goals and will be hosted and held in our high school. The first goal of the program is a tiered study hall program for our student athletes. The second goal is to create a future collegiate athletes academy. The second goal is to work with students who are off track in terms of graduation credits. And the third goal is to provide a robust tutoring program for all students in the school, working hand-in-hand with Stevens Institute of Technology and their undergraduate and graduate work-study students who will serve as tutors in the program. Second, I would like to highlight our high school guidance department. Under the leadership of Damian Arnon and Stacy Gleason, the guidance department has really done some amazing things, and I know Ms. Picapeastra, the principal, is extremely proud of them, but I thought it would be a good idea to just give you a glimpse into what's happening this year already. So, the following information sessions for families, students, and their parents have already been set up and announced. There's already been a college application boot camp, and that was held on August 31. On October 6, there will be a FAFSA information night. There will also be a FAFSA workshop on October 13 and 14. There will be a PSAT interpretation night on January 19, a college planning night on March 23. And Ms. Gleason will be hosting college planning workshops for all of our students from 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock daily, starting September 19. In addition, I'd like to announce the college admissions visits that are already on our school's schedule. So, our students at Hoboken High School will have the pleasure of meeting admissions counselors this year so far, from St. John's University, Lehigh University, Felician University, Fairleigh-Dickinson University Metropolitan Campus, Princeton University, New College of Florida, Rowan University, Caldwell University, NJIT, Albertus Magnus College, Fairleigh-Dickinson University Madison Campus, Stevens Institute of Technology, Bloomfield College, St. Thomas Aquinas College, St. Anselm College, Penn State University, Moravian University, Drew University, Kane University, Albright College, Binghamton University, SUNY College at Oswego, St. Peter's University, and I think I got them all. So, those are the admissions departments that are already registered to come to Hoboken High School, but as the year goes on, more will be added. I also think it's important for all of you to know that funded by the HPEF are college tours and college visits that our students will be able to participate in, and so far, our fall visits that we have set up are to Villanova University, Swarthmore College, and Drexel University. And our spring visits that we have set up are to the College of New Jersey, Columbia University, NYU, and the New School. On October 20, our high school guidance department also has an annual college fair, and just as we have had in the past, we always will include over 50 colleges and universities. But interestingly, in addition to colleges and universities, there's also trade schools and other information that students can get regarding the job workforce and also career readiness. I'd also like to report out that we have a list of instant decision days, so for board members who aren't sure what the difference is, or for the public who isn't sure what the difference between instant decision days and college admissions visits. The college admissions visits are really there for students to interact with admissions counselors, to learn more about the colleges, to collect information, and maybe go and visit these schools or explore these schools on their own. But instant decision days are really important because they're opportunities for our students to be interviewed by admissions counselors right on site in the high school, to be accepted potentially right on the spot, and also to receive scholarship offers for academics right on the spot as well. So, as you know, last year, our class of 2022 earned over $17 million in academic and merit scholarships, and a lot of that is attributed to this wide range of instant decision day schools that agree to come to Hoboken High School. So, with that being said, we always continue to add to the list of instant decision days, but we're only in the middle of September right now, and we already have Felician University, FDU, NJCU, William Patterson, St. Elizabeth University, Caldwell University, Kane University, Scotton, and Bloomfield College on the calendar for instant decision days, and we usually end up having anywhere between 40 and 45 colleges that will visit for that process. And the third program that I'd like to highlight tonight is one that I'm really happy about and really proud of, and that is our middle school's Riverkeeper Institute. So, the middle school has a living lab that is in the bottom floor of the school, and ever since we started managing COVID, we haven't really had the opportunity to utilize the living lab the way we wanted to, but the living lab is equipped with tanks and touch tanks. It's equipped with technology, a whole range of things for students to become biologists and explorers, explorers, and also marine scientists in a lot of ways. The living lab was actually established in partnership with a group of middle school students a few years ago, and two Stevens Institute of Technology classes that came into the district to help us plan a model estuary of the Hudson River. And the idea was to be able to gain as much knowledge, or for the students to gain as much knowledge and to have as many hands-on experiences with the Hudson River as they possibly could. And so, we finally are at a point where we can roll out this Riverkeeper Institute. We're starting with a pilot cohort, just so that we can see and be able to iron out any of the wrinkles, but the Riverkeeper Institute is really an immersive, year-long program that's designed to provide students with field experiences, professional data collection and reporting, project-based inquiry, and hands-on scientific discovery related to Hoboken and the greater Hudson River ecosystem. The Riverkeepers are going to be groups of students who become explorers and scientists and environmentalists, fishermen, fisherwomen, biologists, and aquatic heroes of today and tomorrow. So, the kids had an opportunity to fill out an application, and we're really happy because we were hoping to have our first cohort be rather small, about 21 students, so we've already hit that number. And the application process was something a little bit different. It had nothing to do with grades. It had nothing to do with anything in relationship to honors classes or pre-AP classes. The application was really about asking kids, you know, how comfortable are they with the outdoors, and how comfortable are they touching squishy things, and did they like to get their hands dirty, and do they like hands-on learning? And there was a whole rubric set up for it, and there was also a number of very specific dates that kids had to commit to in order to be a part of the institute. And so, we definitely have applications, enough applications to fill Cohort One. I think it's important for everyone to know that included in this Riverkeeper Institute are a range of Friday activities that will take place each month. That will include a visit to the River Project at Pier 40 in New York City. They will visit a fish ecology wet lab. They're going to participate in eco-kayak paddling along the Hudson River with resilient paddle sports. They're going to do a tour of the New Jersey Wetlands Nature Walk in Sea Caucus. They'll do a waterfront cleanup and stewardship project along the Hudson River. They're also going to be involved in wintertime fishing and sampling with a professor who will be a guest speaker. They'll take a trip to the Hoboken Sewage Authority, in which they will actually focus on microplastics and water treatment. They're also going to do a fishing outing along the Hudson and participate in the Hoboken Sailing Club, and they will do a series of netting experiences along the Hudson River as well. And at the end of the year, they'll actually take all of the things that they've learned, they'll conduct some independent research with their classmates, and present out and have a really interesting final event for the project. So, it's something I'm going to be watching closely. I'll probably be reporting out on it at many of the meetings. I do look forward to this school year. I can already feel there's a lot of, like, really positive energy in the schools. The middle school is buzzing, the high school is, like, hopping along, and all the kids seem really happy, and the three elementary schools, the same thing. We'll continue to, our focus on rigor, relevance, and relationships this year, and be sure to check out the Google Calendar on the website, which we will continue to host different events, but the most important ones that are coming up are back-to-school nights and the last two community roundtables. And so, there is a link to the Google Calendar if anyone does want to register for the community roundtables. You can actually just grab the link and sign up for it right off the website. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot of great information and a number of dates to put in our calendars. I too am very excited to see what our Riverkeepers discover this year. So, thank you. Next, we will go into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
No.
No? All right, so we're going to start with curriculum. I sat in for Ms. Simons this month, so I'll begin with that report. The Curriculum Committee met on Thursday, September 8 at 11:00 a.m. in attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Mr. Clutful, Ms. Delara, and myself. The committee discussed and reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. The committee discussed the following items: Grants for educational purposes. You'll see those on the agenda tonight. The Rockin' Red Wings made special appearances at all of our elementary schools on the first day of school, which made arriving at school and dismissing from school very festive. They performed outside of Wallace in the morning. At Connors, they did an in-school hallway walk, which was very cool, and Brandt, they performed outside at dismissal. As Dr. Johnson mentioned in her report, the committee discussed the back-to-school ice cream social and the barbecue to welcome new families. And lastly, the statements of assurance for professional development, both district and for each school, and teacher-mentor plans have been submitted to the Department of Education. And that is curriculum. Next, we'll move on to facilities. Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually on Thursday, the 8th of September at 2:00 p.m. in attendance were Ms. Katamatori, Ms. Connor, Mr. Callagie, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, and myself. There are two facilities requests you'll see on tonight's agenda. First is a revised date for the Winning Events Group Youth Obstacle Race that we approved on the August agenda. The date for this event at JFK Stadium has been updated to Sunday, November 20. The second request is from Hive Athletics, and that is for use of the Hoboken High School Gymnasium. They requested use of the gymnasium on Wednesday evenings, starting September 21 through November 2, from 7:30 to 10:30 p.m. for a co-ed volleyball league. So, those are the two agenda items, and we recommend all for approval. Other topics discussed that are not on the agenda is the opening of the pre-K classrooms at the Jubilee Center. So, we're very glad that they were able to be open in time for the start of the school year, passing all inspections, in time for our youngest learners to occupy those spaces, given the current challenges with supply chain, getting parts for things, getting everything up and running. It really is amazing that in the short amount of time, our folks had to get those rooms ready, they were able to get them ready to go. So, thank you to everyone who helped make that a possibility, and that's my report.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 8. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Angley, Ms. McGurk, and myself. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval.
Okay. Governance, Ms. DeKurian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Thursday, September 8. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Mr. Clutful, Ms. Simons, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. As is typical for the start of the school year, you will see a number of agenda items dealing with the appointments, resignations of teachers and other staff. This includes paraprofessionals, teachers, the Academic Support Center Administrator, Guidance Coordinator, and Superintendent, excuse me, substitutes, not Superintendent, substitutes. I wanted to point out item 9.17, approval of volunteer with the high school world language, Mandarin, and Chinese department for the 2022-2023 school year. Thank you to fellow board member Joyce Simons for her volunteer work for the Mandarin-Chinese Language Department. I know that she's going to be a great asset there. The agenda also includes appointments related to other school and extracurricular activities, including staffing for Passport to Learning, assistant coaches for girls volleyball, boys' soccer, and football, various positions related to the high school musical, coordinators for the newly-launched Hudson Riverkeeper Institute that Dr. Johnson just updated us about. There are other administrative adjustments from previous meetings and other administrative items, including approval of leave requests and changes, but approval of field trips, one of those I wanted to specifically call out, which is super exciting. As a number of you will remember, last year, two students from the high school were awarded the amazing opportunity to send one of their science experiments into space. That is going to be in an upcoming SpaceX 26 launch, SpaceX 26 launch from Cape Canaveral, so the students, along with teacher chaperones, will be attending that launch. We are so excited for them there. I also wanted to point out one other item, 9.11, approval of appointment of the Board of Education Superintendent Liaison to the Hoboken Public Library for the upcoming school year. The Superintendent of Schools and Board of Education is one representative to the Hoboken Public Library Board. Thank you to Malani Katamatori for taking on this important function. Also, I'd like to express many thanks to Jennifer Evans for her service to the library board on behalf of the Board of Education for the past number of years. So, thank you, Ms. Evans, for your efforts there over in the past, and that is my report.
Thank you. And lastly, wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. The Wellness and Safety Committee met on September 8. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. McGurk, and myself. There are no items on the agenda tonight for approval. Just a couple items to know, the remote learning plans have been submitted to the state for reapproval, and we also looked at a committee hour September menus. We provided feedback, and we look forward to working with Chartwell again this upcoming year. And I just want to wish everybody a happy school year, teacher, staff, and the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick comment. As Dr. Johnson noted, we have a few upcoming roundtables that we have coming up. The district has hosted several in the past, six for district parents guardians, and are in the process of holding eight for Hoboken residents. The next session will be held virtually tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., followed by an in-person session at Hoboken High School on October 4 at 6:00 p.m. That is it. So, next, we will move on to public comments. None? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you, we have a high school representative tonight. Would you like to come up? Thank you.
My name is Naomi Cook. I am the newly-elected Hoboken High School Student Government School Board Representative, and I will be your board representative for the remainder of the school year. The Hoboken High School Student Government and the Hoboken High School Student Activities Office has hit the ground running to begin our new school year. Last Friday, our Hoboken Red Wing family and community came together to support one of our own. One of our special Red Wings is battling leukemia, and no Red Wing fights a battle alone. We are family. We hosted an orange out to raise awareness. Thank you to the Hoboken High School Student Activities Office, Hoboken High School Athletics Department, Red Wing Cheerleading Squad, and the family of our special Red Wing for coming together and making this event happen. A special thanks to the Red Wing Cheerleaders Coaches, Coach Munoz, Coach Aries, Coach Gonzalez, for sharing their vision and honoring our special Red Wing. Thursday, September 15, the Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club will be hosting Hispanic Heritage Flag Raising at 11:30 a.m. in front of the Hoboken High School to kick off the beginning of our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. All are invited to attend. The Theater Department will be holding auditions for Urantown, the musical, in the Hoboken High School Auditorium on Wednesday, September 14, with callbacks on Thursday, September 15 at 3:15 p.m. Urantown is one of the few original musicals not based on any existing story material. It is a satire- It is a satire comedy with sophisticated humor and an epic theater style of ver tot brek. It is nominated for ten Tony Awards in two thousand two and won three. Students need to prepare for a thirty-second cut of the musical theater song of their choice in the comedic style of the show. Students are encouraged to rehearse their piece before the audition and to showcase character choices, emotion, and comedic timing. The themes of this musical mirrors the issues we are facing today, such as capitalism, the importance of basic human rights, environmental issues, social responsibility, corporate mismanagement, and police brutality. It is the Theater Department's goal to get this musical adjusted by the, adjudicated by the Educational Theaters Association for consideration of main stage performance slot at the International Thespens Festival in June. News from the Hoboken High School National Honor Society. NHS members are busy this summer volunteering at various events. Members assisted at school and community functions, including Hoboken Bike Camp, Band Camp, Theater Camp, prepping for theater fundraiser, national night out with the Hoboken Police Department, making buttons for cheer teams to wear on behalf of our special Red Wing fighting leukemia, helping at district ice cream show social, helping at district family new barbecue. We elected our team officers for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. President Franny Michaels, Vice President Aiden Bedingcourt, Secretary Gina Cruz, and Treasurer Julia Pritz. We plan to assist at the upcoming Fall Arts and Music Festival and the Fall Harvest Festival. Arts and Music Festival is October second, and the Harvest Festival is October twenty-second. The Yearbook Club is focusing on getting the word out to seniors regarding senior portraits taking place on September twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. We are happy to say that we are close to a hundred percent signed up. Next up, we will focus on the cover and theme. The Student Council Officers are looking forward to their monthly luncheon and the Hoboken High School Administration, that will be happening sometime later this week. The purpose of this meeting is to foster a positive working relationship between the student government, Hoboken High School Administration. Working together is what makes Hoboken High School such a special place. The Hoboken High School Student Government will be holding Student Government Class Council elections on Thursday, September twenty-second. All representatives will be elected by the student body of Hoboken High School. There will be ten openings for the position per grade level for those who would like to represent their class and become a part of the student government. As representative, students will work closely with the current members and attend our monthly meetings to discuss and plan student and community activities throughout the year. Election results will be announced on Friday, September twenty-third via social media and Google Classroom. This is an exciting time for our student government. On Friday, October seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the Hoboken High School Student Government will host an Italian-American Heritage Flag Raising at Hoboken High School at eleven-thirty AM. All are invited to attend. And finally, to round out this report, the Student Council will be hosting a homecoming pep rally at JFK Stadium on Friday, September thirtieth as we prepare to take on Wecanack High School for our annual homecoming game. We will honor all our athletes from our fall sports programs at the pep rally. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and we look forward to seeing our Reds. Go Red Wings!
Thank you, Ms. Cook. We look forward to you visiting us in the future. Okay, next, we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatory.
Abstained on item nine fourteen, which was referred to as nine eleven previously, and yes for the rest.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubful?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simons? Ms. DeKurian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we will move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. None? Okay, so that is our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.